Able, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a routine justice sprawl.
Okay, everybody mic up. And I have a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of middle school, high school schedule changes by Corey.
So moved.
Brad, do I have a second?
Second.
Randy or Chrissy? Okay. Any further discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign, hearing none, motion passes. 3.11, middle school, high school schedule changes.
Oh, that was the addition.
We got that farther down there now?
Yeah.
Okay. Public forum, Deb, is there anybody?
Um, no.
Okay. Then we will move on to number five, presentation, 5.1, approve the commercial insurance renewal for 2021, 2022. Would you guys like to speak?
John, Randy, you're here. Thanks for having us tonight. I'm John Kozlowski, if you don't know me. Ray Kozlowski here as well. We're just kind of going with the insurance renewal for the upcoming year. Currently, the insurance renewal is with Liberty Mutual and part of it's with Randy, so we're confident here just to kind of go over those numbers with you and address any questions that you might have. We just gave you a proposal for you, kind of just showing current coverages, renewal coverages for the upcoming year. So you can see the current 2020 renewal and then the 2021 renewal coming up here. These are annual figures, so everything you can see as far as the numbers, as far as premiums in the annual. Basically, just starting out with property coverage on the front page on the left side of the sheet, I'm just going to run down current coverages briefly just to kind of talk about that real quickly. Also bring up any changes that are coming forward, there's a few changes that are upcoming with Liberty's proposal for the upcoming year, so we'll talk about those a little bit. But basically, first thing that we're doing on property, we do blanket the personal property and the building coverage, it's all blanketed. We currently have total blanket coverage at 52,921,834. We do a little inflation every year on those numbers and we're doing a 5% inflationary figure on those for the upcoming year. So that brings it up to the 55,573,108 is what that brings it up to for the upcoming year. The blanket personal property, we're currently at 3,228,930 and that remains the same unless you'd like to make any changes to that. But that just remains the same, we don't do any inflation on that, that's a requested increase if you wanted to request an increase on that. We are currently running a $5,000 deductible on property, so that would be each claim occurrence deductible is what that would be. How we do include the equipment breakdown included in our package. And then also we have the school extension ultra plus endorsement, which is basically adding on some sign coverage of country receivable, money's experience, things like that, that's part of the package. One new thing coming up this year, Liberty is imposing a wind gale deductible this year of a $50,000 deductible. So this is something new and that's something that they are doing. And what they're doing is they're picking that throughout the state or states, they write more than one state that have basically gale control on over the last few years, maybe not right here in Hickstone, but the surrounding areas had the gales on, so that's why they're doing some of this, so. But that's something new this year. Inland rain coverages, these are some things that we're covering, lower deductibles and having all risk coverage on them. That's the miscellaneous equipment, athletic uniforms and equipment, we're running a half million dollar limit on those. Musical instruments and uniforms, we're running $514,500 on those. The audiovisual equipment, we're running at 157, 500, computer equipment at 1,715,000 on the computer equipment. Signs, we are scheduled for 130,000 on signs. The fine arts are included for 50,000 there, dwelling under construction at 100,000 and then the winter biting we have on there for 994,685 dollars. That does have a $25,000 deductible on that piece there. That's something from Mr. Anderson was talking earlier, that's something that will probably be coming down in the near future. Premium savings roughly on that was about $4,900 for the year, once that is removed. It's about that much savings, that's how much it costs for the year for winter biting. So. On the public liability, this is covering bodily injury and property damage, we have a million dollar occurrence on that, 2 million aggregate. Employee benefits liability for a million occurrence, 3 million aggregate. What that is, that's liability for basically if you have benefits out there, which you do, health insurance, things like that. Also retirement, if there's a mistake that's being advertised to the school, that would be to cover the errors and omissions on the school for the benefits part, so. Deductible is a thousand dollars each person on that. And we have the School Violence Act, crisis expense coverage, this would be for basically any type of attack that would happen to the school and it would be helping bring in counseling, things like that to the students to help and also the teachers to help in those situations to cope with what could happen. Their medical payments excluding the students would be up 15,000 currently and that's changing to 5,000. That would be something, you know, kind of like slips and falls in the parking lot, things like that. That's what we cover there for those types of things. And then the sexual misconduct is on there for a million each occurrence and in aggregate of a million for the $2,500 deductible. Jumping to the next page, it's going to have crime coverage. This crime coverage, we kind of listed as crime coverage in the insurance industry, this is picking up like employee dishonesty, Liberty calls it faithful performance, but it's employee dishonesty, so if there's theft that was happening from an employee, this would be covering like theft that would be happening. And that's a thousand dollar deductible. Orderary alterations will be included for 15,000 with a $500 deductible. Computer and fund transfer fraud, you have currently 25,000, that's going up to 50,000 on the renewal. That's just an add-on there. And then the theft, disappearance and destruction, that's your monies and securities, that would cover 10,000 on this, 10,000 on this is what that would cover, the $500 deductible. Identity recovery and data compromise coverage, that's kind of your cyber coverage that we have at the school. Covers first party and third party, basically injury. It's a $250,000 annual that we have on that and that's an aggregate as well. Deductible on that currently at 10,000, going to 2,500 on the renewal, so a little reduction there. And then the data compromise expense expense, you have 125,000 on renewal versus 100 currently. And then also the data compromise defense and liability coverage for going up to 125,000, 100,000 as well on that. The garage liability coverage, it's in the autos and the garage. The auto liability coverage is a million, bodily injury and property damage combined single limit, up to a million. And then your personal injury protection, which is required by state law for 40,000, uninsured and underinsured for a million as well. And then we have the comprehensive inclusion deductibles at $500 for comp and collision if there's a claim on those. And that's covering the scheduled auto. The next piece there where it says comprehensive and collision, that's for the garage keepers. This would be covering if, let's say, there was somebody that brought a car in or a tractor in who worked on it and the ag department had that and something happened while they kept that, that's what that's covered. And we would cover that up to 100,000 on the garage keepers, so if they take on, and Mr. Anderson, we talked about that last time we met and he thought that 100,000 was very adequate for coverage, so. Higher non-no트 autos concluded there and I listed the schedule of the units that we cover under the auto program there for you. So you can see there's nine, nine units there. One thing that we did change too, just going up above on towing, we did eliminate the towing coverage on the driver's ed car. So that's one change as well. It was a $50 reimbursement for towing on that unit and that was something that Liberty is offering insurance, so. Umbrella coverage, this is your excess liability that goes over top of the coverages I talked, which would be the auto and you know, the public liability and so forth, this would go above that, it's excess liability and that would be a million each occurrence in the aggregate, there's no deductible on that for retention. The school leaders errors and omissions program, that's basically covering the errors, basically the D and all, the directors and officers, basically liability that would come against for, for the leaders of the school basically. If they tried to sue somebody because of something that was said or done, we would defend that, so. And that's going to be $10,000 deductible for the upcoming year, currently at a five. The next page, jumping over to the workers' compensation program, we're doing statutory limits for public entities at a million. Each accident, a million on the disease, that's our policy limit and then a million each employee. Payroll, we break base work comp on payroll, so the higher the payroll goes, the more that you would pay for your work comp. It's auditable, so it's something that if you don't have as much payroll, we actually refund back any unused per use for that, so. A couple of things there real quickly, experience modification did go up two percentage points, you can see that's actually was at 1.24% and now this year it's at 1.26. We were able to get additional credit, these are discretionary credits from the tiered. We were able to get an additional 5% credit on work comp. Primarily, I would say it's because it's, we've had you a long time and basically just want to retain the business, so. Breakdown of premium, you can kind of see the premium, I don't know if I need to run through each line, if you'd like, I can. But if I go down to the bottom line, total package premium for the property, last year was at 95,107. The upcoming year is at 106, 177 for the year, up about 10% on property and liability coverage there. Workers' compensation, you can see the premium is actually down a little bit, it's about 5% savings. The overall package with the property and the work comp together is basically up about 6% overall for the upcoming year. With some increases in the coverages or changes that we talked earlier here, so. Terrorism at the very bottom, exclude terrorism, you can do that on property and auto, there's some savings there. Obviously, we're not recommending that, but just letting you know that that's an option, so. Any questions?
The premiums for the property, I'm assuming do not include the new facility yet because we are not in control of it.
That's correct.
So once that comes on, this premium is going to jump substantially.
Basically, a couple of things there, we did estimate that for Mr. Anderson, it was roughly about, we came up with adding on the $30 million addition. That was going to run about 18,000 higher than what it is currently for a year.
Okay.
Also, keep in mind, we haven't removed Hill or Brown here either.
Right.
So, once that does get removed, that's about 11,000 savings roughly per a year, so the offset would be the difference between us.
So if the buildings are down, once they're down, if we're still in control of the property, we would see a reduction in the cost for that?
Correct.
Since the building is not there, I assume?
Correct, you still want to continue your liability for the
Right, property.
properties at that point, yes.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions?
There's no issue adding and taking those off when they come online and
No, you just always know when you need them off. They'll basically charge for you accordingly for, you know, they'll refund back according on the money you paid, so, so.
Okay. So now, when we make a motion to approve this, will we need to make the motion to be able to include so that the authorization is there for you guys to add the new facility once it comes online?
Well, this is a renewal for the year, so any changes that occur, I think, just automatically go in there so we don't have to
Okay.
do anything every time there's a change, you're renewing the yearly
Total package.
insurance package and if there are things like, normally you don't have buildings come on and go off of your insurance, but in this case, that's, the companies are aware of this and you know that's how it's going to work, so.
Okay. Are there any further questions? Any further questions? Do I have a motion to approve the commercial insurance with Kozlowski's? And when you make the motion, please make it with or without the terrorism coverage?
I'll make a motion to approve the 2021, 2022 commercial insurance renewal, including the terrorism in the amount of 146,472.
But that number does not include the terrorism, or does it?
That, that would, right?
The top, the higher number includes terrorism, the bottom number on the very bottom, 46,472 does include terrorism.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Did you get that, Deb, the second? Okay. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the commercial insurance renewal for 2021, 2022, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign, hearing none, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you for having us and thank you for your business, we appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Move on to 5.2, title programming, Melanie and Peggy.
And it hangs there. Okay, no, don't worry about it. Board members, you all have the PDF of the presentation in your board book. And Peggy and I have this. All right. So I'd like to introduce Mrs. Reynolds, she is working on her principal licensure and being at this meeting and helping present this as part of her internship. So, thank you for allowing her to do that. We are presenting tonight our school-wide title programming plan. And so our school-wide title programming, school-wide is different than what we've had in the past. It is a comprehensive school improvement effort designed to elevate an entire educational program of a Title I school. It's based on comprehensive reform strategies rather than add-on. It is for all children while accelerating the progress of students who would otherwise be eligible for Title I targeted assisted services. And so school-wide covers just more than reading and math. School-wide addresses core instruction, social, emotional wellbeing, school climate, behavior, student health, and engaging cultural communities.
And go on to the next slide. So the difference between school-wide title, which we are proposing, and targeted title, which is what we've had in the past, is this. So school-wide programming will help all kids, we can reach all kids with school-wide title. Targeted is specifically for individuals with needs. School-wide title aligns with our world's best workforce, read well by third grade, as well as essential math skills for fourth grade. So the steps that we took to become a school-wide are the following. We first submitted a letter of intent to MDE to become school-wide. Then the elementary leadership team conducted a comprehensive needs assessment that looked at various types of data, including demographic, academic, attendance, behavior, and graduation rate. The next step was to draft a plan and we are in the process of getting that final approval from Mr. Anderson. And we'll finalize the plan by putting it into action when we return to school in September.
So the three greatest areas of need that came out of the comprehensive needs assessment that was conducted by the elementary leadership team were, the first is strategy one, support our student population that may not qualify for special education, English language services, or past title targeted services. Strategy two is giving students a true double dip and not missing core instruction in reading and math. A double dip equals full core instruction and a full intervention. So it's not part of one and part of another, it's full of everything. Strategy three is parent engagement with all cultures represented in our district.
So using the comprehensive needs assessment along with our district strategic plan, we have identified the areas of greatest need and specific strategies that will help meet the following goals that are a part of the strategic plan. So district goal number two states that we will increase the academic achievement of all students through the use of effective instruction and challenging, engaging, and aligned curriculum assessments. Strategies one and two will help us meet that specific goal. District goal number three states that we will provide the resources, programs, and personnel that enable all students to be successful. This will also be met through strategies one and two. District goal number four is to meet the needs of all students and that's embedded in all of three of our strategies. And finally, district goal number five is we will create and maintain a school culture that promotes and builds positive relationships and mutual respect among and between students, staff, parents and guardians, and the community as a whole. And that will be met through strategy number three.
Our school-wide strategy number one, which is support our student population that may not qualify for special ed, English language services, or past title targeted services, includes essentially support for all students. It is broken down into a few action steps. Currently, we have one math interventionist for grades three through eight. In our plan, we would like to hire a K through two math interventionist. This is something that may not happen this year, it'll probably happen in the future as we roll with our plan. We will use our reading interventionists, which we currently possess, which are Mrs. Slinger and Mrs. Schreckengoss. Mrs. Slinger will be for grades kindergarten through second grade and Mrs. Schreckengoss will be for grades three through five. We will monitor the schedules of our interventionists and make sure the fidelity of the plan is met. We also monitor our assessment data, our FAST data, which is fall, winter, and spring, as well as classroom data. We will also create a response to intervention plan, as well as a multi-tiered system of support, including win time, which means what I need time. Now, RTI and MTSS have been thrown around as things that have been done, but they haven't been outlined and staff haven't been trained. So they will be created, staff will be trained, and then we'll create the tier of supports. In, later in the board meeting, you'll hear me present our literacy plan and in there is a multi-tiered system of support, but it's very vague. It just says which kids would get helped, but it doesn't say how and when and to what extent and with which staff. So we will work on unifying that. We also look at our academic adding real, real support to our tier two. Right now, our tier two, we have a very good tier one, which is our core instruction, and a good tier three, which is our special services, but our tier two kind of gets money, so looking at that academic and social, emotional learning in that tier two area. And then as we get started with the school year, the leadership team as well as a literacy team will work on creating a SMART goal with our FAST data and common grade level assessments to monitor this goal as we go over time. Our second strategy is making sure students with needs are getting a true double dip with instruction. So first of all, we need to understand double dipping, we also need to train our interventionists how to push in. Staff development for our teachers to learn the value of push-in and create procedures and criteria for using push-in and pull-out to support students with the use of the multi-tiered system of support model. So not just having training, but yet having a system that is created so that we can monitor the system and ensure that students are receiving the support they need when they need it, as well as getting the enrichment they need when they need it through the what I need time. Establish a schedule that provides push-in and pull-out and provides what I need time. Fidelity of the multi-tiered system of support model will be monitored through the use of a practice profile, so we'll say, here's, here's the system we'd like. Okay, what does it look like when it's running well? And we will monitor that and if it's not looking like it's supposed to look like when it's running well, we will adjust and monitor and provide support as needed. And we will also create a SMART goal for strategy two, once our school year starts, with our literacy team and our building elementary leadership team using FAST and grade level common assessments. Our third strategy is parent engagement with all, parents of all cultures represented in our district. This will take place with hosting intentional learning, training workshops for parents and families to learn how to best support their students. These can happen during back-to-school, our open house, communication days for parents, and they can be virtual or face-to-face. Engagement with families, we will look to provide opportunities for families to be involved. Communication with translations, create opportunities for parents to connect and build networks and relationships. And we ideally would like to do this through our literacy and math nights. Additionally, we are advertising currently for an outreach coordinator. This would be someone who would work with our families to help them understand our system, get more involved in our system. And right now, we have a little bit of few outside factors that are playing into not having anyone apply for this. We are looking for the right person, plus we have budget constraints and fitting in where that's going to roll at. But we feel that in districts that have diversity, having an outreach coordinator really helps unite the district and bring everyone to the table and help educate and process. We would like to establish a welcoming school environment that respects and celebrates students, language, and cultural diversity. And fidelity will be monitored through our yearly parent engagement survey, as well as math and literacy night surveys and any other surveys that we're able to use if we pull parents in, like our communication surveys that'll be coming up. Are there questions? I talked a lot.
So what qualifications would the outreach coordinator need? I mean, what are we, what kind of a person are we looking for?
We are looking for someone who has a good relationship with families of culture in our school district, who has good communication skills, who understands our system somewhat, we can teach them our system. But someone who, who's engaged in what's going on in our community to begin with. Mr. Anderson, would you have any qualities to add to this?
Well, I wouldn't say we're looking for a teacher.
Okay, that's what I meant.
We're not looking for, you know, any credentials or anything right now. It's kind of a job description and someone who can make connections, so, like Ms. Smolensky. But it is not a licensed teaching position or administrative.
Could you explain the difference between the push-in and the push-out method?
Yeah. So, push-in, so right now in our targeted services, we do a lot of pull-out where the child is removed from the classroom to receive the services that they need and then they're brought back to the classroom. Push-in would be that intervention teacher would come into the classroom and say if the classroom is doing stations, they would be one of the stations. So they would work with their students that may need that tier three support, as well as all of the students in the classroom would rotate through their station. Or pushing could also mean maybe co-teaching a lesson, so that there would be two licensed teachers in front of them at the same time. Those are the two primary ways push-in works, there are many other ways that teachers have used push-in to support students while both of them are in the classroom.
So the integrationists, or the interventionists would have access to more students? So essentially, the cost for that position would be less per student, right?
And they'd be also be able to provide enrichment activities for all students, so it is, it's a really nice, nice program.
Right, it allows us to be able to, instead of just focus at our lowest 5%, we can focus across our, all of our students' skills and needs.
And you talked about win time, about training staff and what we want out of that, I feel like there's a lot of differences in win time, what kids are getting out of it, from what I hear, there's between who's teaching or who's in there and who's, whether they're getting
Are you talking for the middle school?
Yes, the middle school primarily. I feel, I, I'm not sure about the elementary, but I've heard kind of mixed reviews about whether kids are able to get the help they need during that time or feel like it's accessible to them.
That's good, to, good information to know and feedback. So the elementary would be set up similarly. Right now, it's scheduled for once a week, where we would be able to have all of our interventionists, plus our specialist teachers would be available, some of them to, to work with students. And we're hoping and in our plan, our brainstorm, is that our interventionists can use our data and really data and really set the stage for, okay, here's the learning that needs to happen. Okay, let's brainstorm with the grade level teens. How can we make that work? What are the strategies that can happen? So when we're coming out of the Shubhat Elementary, it may look and feel different than the middle school, but we're able to do that because we have a few more people who are those interventionists.
I just have heard sometimes it gets to be more of a chat hangout section, which, you know, it's fine if no one needs help.
Correct.
But if you, if there's some students that need help, it feels kind of hard for you to ask for help when other kids are just hanging. You know, I mean, you feel singled out if you have to ask for help, I feel like sometimes.
Thank you. Any more questions?
Would the special ed EL and the other kids that are qualified for targeted services be able to be in the classroom more with students if we're utilizing this? So that's a good thing, right?
Yeah, that is a good thing.
Keeping, keeping students together as much as we can. We, we know that there are students who are going to need to have the pull-out, and we're going to need to have that specific instruction in a quiet space with what, you know, all the things that they need. But that should be the tier three, and that shouldn't be what we rely upon. For service.
Any other questions? Does this show up on the website at all anywhere, or?
Not yet. It will when we're able to move forward to make sure that it's approved and we have all of our goals set. So as we get going in the school year, when we have our goals created, we will get this out there so that we can keep our goals public and make sure that people know where we're going.
Okay. As it, as if we come forward with this, and it, it gets to those places where it's being seen by everybody, I would like to see the explanation for what your abbreviations are.
Okay, yep.
Because some of them, I, I had to throw a guess at. I mean, I've seen enough of them, but...
Right. No, I completely...
You know, not being in the education field, you know, in the general public, same way, the explanation of what the abbreviation is would be great.
Yep. I appreciate that.
Anything else? That's non-action item.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. We'll move on to 5.3, middle school, high school, schedule changes by Cory.
All right. Well, hello, everybody, and thanks for giving me a few minutes to visit with you tonight. We've done a lot of work at the high school level specifically, and I wanted to share some information with you as we move forward into next year. I shared three documents on the board agenda, and the first one I want to look at is just titled Changes for 21-22. And as you take a look at that, the first thing you'll notice is I do an outline of what our staffing looked like last year to what our staffing will look like this year. And I thought it was kind of a good way to, just to see how we're changing, since our fifth grade is moving on. You can see the total number of FTEs that I was in charge of last year and what I'll be in charge of this year. And then I kind of break it down into the core staff, and you'll notice some, some shifts, even right there, where last year in six through eight, we had eleven and a half FTEs and twelve and a half in the high school. In order to balance out what our needs were at each level, since we're hopefully not in a, you know, hybrid situation this coming year, we're going to be ten and fourteen. And that, that fits better because at the high school level, you have more, you have more choices and you have more elective opportunities. So you typically have more FTEs at the, at the high school level. You can take a look at the shared staff across each, from counselors to our special ed staffing, music, our specialists, our PE, and, and DAP instructors, our activity director, our dean of students, and then some additional supports that we have, and then finally, our pair of supports. So I just did this so that you would have an opportunity to see where we're at and what we're going to look like this coming year. And we've, we've maneuvered things, and I think one of the more noticeable things you can see is that we went from a half-time dean of students to a full-time dean of students, and, and through our shifting, we were able to accomplish that. And I think that's, that's important, and I'll explain that as we go through. So that's the first part of, of what I wanted to share tonight. The second part, at the bottom, is our scheduling approach for, for the high school. So we've worked to be more student-centric at our middle school and then at our high school, and that's having, a part of that is having core staff work primarily with middle-level students, and now core staff that work primarily with high school students. So when, when I looked at our scheduling, we moved to a block schedule this past year, good, bad, or indifferent. We did it because we thought that was the right thing to do at that time going into the year that we had. But in the middle of the year, when I started creating the schedule, I really wanted to focus on a student-centric schedule that provides ample opportunity to meet state requirements and standards while providing college and career readiness. That's obviously a huge focus at the high school. So I, I heard a lot of different comments, did a little surveying, talked to each, each content group at the high school of teachers, and what I, what I settled on, it's a, essentially, it's a six-period day. And when you look at a six-period day, you have two blocks to start the day, so similar blocks to what we had this year, and then you finish the day with four, what we would call skinnies, that are more, more closely resemble the former seven-period day. So it's a melding of both schedules, in essence. And when you look at that, it says a six-period day, but you, you have to understand, and this is kind of why I presented this, this isn't really easy to understand the first time through. It's, kids will earn eight credits per semester, even though it's a six-period day, and that's because there's quarter classes in there during those block times. And, and I felt strongly that we needed to have, have this mix, because I feel there are classes that are more in tune with year-round instruction, but I also feel there are classes that need eighty to ninety minutes a day to meet. And trying to kind of get the best of both worlds, I know no schedule is perfect, but in looking at it, I felt that it was important to, if we're trying to be student-centric, we need to try and make this, this come together. So you can look at some of the, the details here, and I'll, I'll kind of come back to part B, but I want to flip to the backside, because on the backside, it shows you what a typical day looks like. So you've got the six periods, you've got the tentative timeframes that, that we mapped out for the year, and then the right column is the actual instructional minutes. So we're at eighty-two and forty-six. Now you notice that there's also a lunch, lunch period in there, that's fifty-five minutes. You know, I, I may do some, some weird things, but I will not give kids fifty-five minutes just for lunch. That's, that's not smart. Kids get through a thirty-minute lunch, and, and that's what they have. So in the, in the right hand, you see that lunch A runs thirty minutes, and then they'll go to their daily advisory. We're going to start calling that prime time. It's hard to get used to that advisory to prime language. And then simultaneously, we'll have a, a group of students that will go to prime time first and then to lunch. So we, we will have a split high school lunch, and with our calendar setting, the way we have this year, we will run this schedule four days a week, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. And because we have the early release, we, we won't do our, our advisory prime on Wednesdays. So we've kind of put together a schedule for that, and, and we'll have all our students eat together on that day. So I feel that one of the benefits we, we had this year was a split lunchtime, and there is a little bit of overlap as, as kids are finishing one. It worked really well, honestly. We had kids down in the, in the commons, we'd move them into the gym at, at the end of their lunch, and then the next group would come down, and then we would just kind of rotate that group from the gym to, to the classroom. It worked really well, and so this is a similar approach to that. So that's what a typical day will look like. So if you go back to some of the details, just real quick to run through, students are going to earn sixteen credits a year now. So typically, they would, and on the former schedule, it was twelve to fourteen. They're now going to earn sixteen, so there'll be some adjustments in our student handbook that reflect the total number of, of credits needed. You'll see, as I mentioned before, eight total credits earned per semester, the sixty-four max throughout the, throughout their high school career. There are fifty-nine credits that are required of the sixty-four, and the fifty-nine are laid out here, and you can see that we have a recommendation for a new career awareness or career development. I can't remember exactly what we titled it, but that was one of the, the classes that I had heard a lot from parents in the last few years, that I get, my kid doesn't know what to do, and they have no idea what's, what's out there. So did, did some research, looking at other schools and how they offered a career awareness or a career development type of, type of course, and, and we've offered it as an elective. So we're going to move that into a required course here as we go through. We will offer that to juniors and seniors this year, so all the juniors will be in, but if you're a senior and want, want to take it, you definitely can do that. In the future, all our juniors will go through that class. And we figured that, combined with the economics or a personal finance elective, are really good opportunities for kids to get a lot of those skills that, and, and awareness of what's out there. So it's, it's a step in that direction, trying to give them those opportunities to understand and see where we can go with those courses. Under this, it says there's no study halls. The intention is to, is to not have study halls, and I know that that's somewhat of a lightning rod at times. When you look at, at, at study halls, some kids utilize them, some kids don't. Under this, when you, when you look at our advisory prime time, we will be doing a variety of things during that time, and one of the things that we've brought up is, well, will there be opportunities for kids to, to do some schoolwork, to maybe go meet with a teacher? Those are going to be opportunities that we're going to look at and see how it fits with what we're trying to accomplish during that time. We know we're going to be doing some SEL instruction, because that's a big component of why we're moving to, to this schedule, is to fit in that, the SEL piece for the high school. So we're working on, on what that's going to look like, and that'll be a big task for the leadership team and our counseling team as we, as we move forward with this. I know I talked to our special ed instructors, and, and we've got the means to, to do some things with our students in need, to meet their IEP goals and, and to continue working there. And then, then I've talked with some students who, we've had language in our handbooks regarding students who've taken, taken two or more concurrent enrollment courses at a time. So, for example, the big one as a senior, big ones as a senior are always Calc and AP Chem. So the language we, we've had in our handbooks before is about if you have those two, you could have an extra study hall. So that is something that I've talked to a few students about, and, and I'm considering is, could we do a study hall for, keep that language, do one study hall for any student who is taking two or more concurrent enrollment courses? And we've offered that only to concurrent enrollment that's offered here. That does not count for PSEO courses. So it was, it was something we did. I think we put that in about six years ago, and I thought that was an appropriate thing at that time, and it's something that I've taken a hard look at right now. So that's what we have there. You could see our, our teachers moved from roughly fifty, fifty minutes of, of daily teacher prep to eighty to ninety minutes, depending on, on how their schedule shakes out. We've do, you know, we've gone through a review of required courses and electives, and this is where we recommended to add the career development or career awareness course, and, and we're going to keep looking, you know, what, what should we be offering? And I know the goal's on career technical education and how that's a part of our, our district initiative. This, that's where this, this fits in. What do we, what do we really need to expose students to, and, and where do we go with that? So that's a lot there. I think I'll pause and take some questions before I move to the, the next part.
Any questions for Cory?
I guess my only concern is, I mean, some kids, I feel like, I mean, is, is the study hall something that's, that helps them get through school? I mean, are these kids on a normal, if they don't have a study hall, are they taking it home and doing their homework? Are they, you know, if they don't have time set aside during the school day, are they going to take it home? Where, you know, are there, a lot of kids, kids don't have parents that ask them if they have homework? You know, I mean, it's, I just feel like, and if they're out of the school building and it's not specified for that time, are they going to do it? I don't know. I mean, I'm just asking.
I think it's a mixed bag. I, I think that some kids, my experience is, if they, they get a forty-five minute timeframe, they're not going to do it, no matter what. Other kids might use it. So that, that was a hard decision. But I felt it was, in putting this together and what I had seen from other districts and in talking to our staff, I, I felt this was important to, to move in. And maybe sometimes we get frustrated because we, we don't see kids using their time the way we think they should be using their time. And that's one of the things we have to overcome is, how do we best use time?
Right.
And I think six classes in a day is appropriate for, for students. I always thought seven was tough. I, I didn't think that was right. And I do think a lot of what I heard, teachers who teach the eighty to ninety-minute blocks tend to give more time in the classroom to work with kids.
Now, last year, you said no study halls too, but there was lots of kids that had study halls, so...
Yeah. You're right. And, and a large part, so if you go back and you look at our staffing, I have one and a half less teachers, and it was really hard to, to schedule, and basically, we made sacrifices to help the middle school have four sections across the board, because that worked really well for the middle school, and it did not work so well for the high school. And that was one of the things we had to do to accommodate for the year.
Any other questions?
So like the two-block AM classes, is that like your math and, or it's different for everybody?
It, it's different. Scheduling was a little challenging.
But there's certain courses that...
Yeah, I, I took, I took the recommendations to the best that I could. Math classes wanted to be more year-round, and so the majority of our math classes are on the, the skinnies. I believe Algebra II is the one that is on the block. And I've got it somewhere in, in my file over there. Where languages are year-round, that was another, another big one. You know, your band, your choir get to go year-round. So it, we, we just tried to accommodate the, the best we can. I think a lot of our language arts are on the block, and a lot of our history classes, so it's, you know, and then honestly, a lot of our electives, when you look at the ag-based, we have quite a few of those that are, are on the blocks. But again, you, you have to balance the whole schedule. So my goal is to have fifteen, at least fifteen classes per, per class period during the day, and I think I, I think I got that, so...
So what do you, what do you classify then for your sixth assignment? What time period do they fall under?
So our sixth assignment would be, they would be two blocks and then three skinnies.
Okay.
Because normally, so a, a normal teaching load would be block, block, and then prep, prep, two skinnies classes. If that, that makes sense? So this would be an additional, so they don't have forty-five minutes of prep.
But they're all being, any sixth assignment consists of the same amount of time?
Yes.
So you're not putting a sixth assignment as a, as the long block?
No.
It's, it's all in the skinnies?
Right. Right.
Okay.
And that's the two that I'm recommending for this year. The Mass Comm is because we were able to offer it first semester, but I couldn't offer it second semester because of the other things that Mrs. Olson teaches that I had to get in. And then, and we're trying to commit to mass communications as, building on it, the more we're using, you can see the things that they do between that and journalism. We're able to get out a lot of really cool student-centered, student-created things. And then the other one was Advanced Art. And that was kind of a, another class we've always talked about. We've never been able to offer it because you get three kids. Well, if you get three kids, and even if you get, some years we have seven kids that might be interested, but they can only take it period one, period three, or period five, you can't get it there. So this is, was an opportunity for us to add it as a sixth assignment. And because of the way the schedule comes together, we're able to get enough kids there.
So are any of the COVID restrictions still in place for teaching staff or?
Well, as of right now, no. So until we hear from the governor and, and our legislature, any recommendations or guidance for next year, I'm under the impression there are, that we're back to normal.
Back to our...
Pre-COVID, yes.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay, you have anything else then Cory?
Oh, I got all sorts of stuff.
He's just getting started.
No, and I don't want to be here all night. But I'm going to skip number eight for a moment and just jump down to shared services on that back page. And it, just wanted to reiterate, expanding the role of the dean of students. We know that the dean handles general student behavior and discipline. We talk about, one of the things is that on occasion I'm out of the building. And when I'm out of the building, our dean of students is available. But if he's teaching, then we kind of get in a pickle. And so there are some challenges there. So that was, that was one of the, one of the reasons for moving to a full-time. I think when you look at our overall climate that we're trying to improve, the role that that person could play is super important. And to have the accessibility to both our staff and our students on a full-time basis is really important. And as we try to make our PBIS team really get rolling this year, he's going to play a big part of that. And, you know, we can, we can put a lot of programs in, and I'll show you a lot of programs here in a moment. But if we don't do them right, it doesn't really matter. So we have to provide the resources for it. And then counseling team, you can kind of read through that, but we're working on hiring an additional social worker that'll work primarily up here in the middle and high school. I'm super excited about that. I've done some interviews, so I'm close on getting that put together. But I think that is going to be huge for taking some of the mental health pieces, some of the truancy off our counselors and allowing them to get in, to do that tier one with everybody, the SEL, some of the PBIS, and then focus on college and career readiness as well. So I think that's, that's a great thing there. The recent changes, I just put that in there because sometimes you don't really get down to the building. Now we're finally back here. But if you walk around, you might see some of these things. It's not all done. I'll point down to the school safety, letter D. Just so you know, we do try to update our cameras from a security standpoint. We're redoing the commons ones because they're the oldest that we have in our building. So that, that's something you don't see, but it's there. And then the classroom updates. So down this hall on the end, Evelyn Klein works with our developmental cognitive students. And we're updating some of the equipment that she has so she can do more life skills-based curriculum with our students. And we're pretty excited about the things that she'll be able to do there. And then the other thing we wanted to accomplish this year was updating our business lab and trying to create a real high-level business lab for our students to learn in and utilize. So that's all we have at this point. All right, I want to pop back to the redesigned matrix. And Ellen kind of looks like, looks like this one. So just so you can kind of see how I mapped it out. And I've spent a lot of time with our high school leadership team talking about these things and putting this together. This, it's just a draft. This is not a completed document by any stretch of the imagination. But the farthest, farthest column on the left, nine areas to guide building our brick house. So this comes from a lot of the work we did in the Principals Academy. And there's, there's nine governing areas that effective schools look at and target to be effective schools. So I took the ones that I felt fit with our district goals, which is the second column, and then the subsets of the district goals, which is the district objectives. So I kind of laid it out because I needed to visually see how things were rolling. And then the work that our leadership team did, starts in that next column that says high school redesign goals or learning work. So I break it down into learning work. The next column is implementation. And then the third column is standard work. And the reason it's broken down this way is the learning work are the ideas and the things that we see that we think could be something really valuable for what we do at the high school. And then we start talking about it and we look at some, some of the research and we start making decisions, well, is this good, is this not good? What do we need to talk to our staff about and so forth? So you can see, like in that color-coded orange first part, we're going to talk about SEL programs, a high school advisory, a prime. We talk about PLPs, which that's personal learning plans. We're supposed to have those for each student. So we start kind of working through that. And then, I mean, you kind of, kind of look down. I don't want to go through the whole thing, but I just want to give you a sense of how we're kind of mapping out the things, some of the things that I've already talked about and things you might be aware of already. But, and how they coordinate with where our district is and what you guys are expecting. And then the implementation work in that middle column that's kind of shaded there, that is the work that we're starting. So the very top one says implementation of character-strong SEL programming during, during high school prime. So last year at the middle school, we started our second step curriculum that we use during middle school prime. And the recommendation from our counseling team was that we use the character-strong curriculum for the high school. And we'll be doing some training here before the start of the school year. And that's, that's where we're going to go with, with the implementation. So those are things that we're trying to do now. Some of it might, might get done faster than others, but that's, those are the things that are going on at, you know, this coming year. And then the standard work, fairly blank at the moment. That, this, as we get better things, it kind of moves in that direction. The example I put there is that extended day learning programs to support students with credit recovery, an example, summer school. So we've had summer school for a while, so that's standard. We do that and we have that in place. All the things we do, we have the seat and the sat, we've got a referral process, we have grid level, team meetings. Those things have been around for a while. So you'll see, you'll see us fill this in over time. And then, of course, we've got data that, that should be driving a lot of our decision-making and so forth. So that's what that is. Now to put it in another visual for you is the next one. And that's what this one is. And we just, at the top on the outer is, is the district goals. And then the learning work is the next column and the intervention, or excuse me, the implementation, and then the standard work. So you can just kind of see how it flows down and how we can focus on the things that we need to. And then the last part at the bottom says what's leaving. And that's another important thing that we need to talk about. If things aren't working, if it's not doing what it's supposed to, it needs to go. So, real quick there, I can definitely explain things further if you'd like. And not necessarily right now, but I will take your questions if you have other questions. Sorry.
Any questions for Cory?
Tried to go fast.
Any questions for Cory?
Did you create all this? Very impressive.
Yeah.
Good job.
It's a spreadsheet. It was, it was an interesting year. And I got to say, you know, it probably wasn't the best year when you look at the whole of school. But I was able to sit down, especially with the high school leadership team, and we had a lot of really good conversations. When you say you're going to meet for 45 minutes and it's two hours, and, but they had the flexibility because of the way the hybrid system was working. And we could have some of those conversations that we haven't really sat down and got into before. So really proud of those opportunities. And this is part of what comes out of that.
Well, you can tell there was a lot of thought and time put into it.
Yep. Anything else? Okay. We don't need a motion on anything there, right Deb? Nope. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Katie, do I have a second? Brad, any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, I would like to thank Christ the King Lutheran Church for the donation of $100 to the wellness room. Pipestone Area Friends of the Library for a donation of $898.41 to Minder's Community Library for Take It and Make It Kits and Full Steam Ahead 2021. And the Arrow Athletic Booster Club for a donation of $2,850 for a Luma Elite Taping Station for Athletics for a grand total of $3,848.41. So do I have a motion to approve the consent? We got the motion, don't we?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. All those in favor of approval of the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Move on to seven, financials, 7.1, review elementary building budget year-to-date. Jackie?
Everything looks fine according to the numbers. I tie all the numbers out between what Klaus Anderson has and what we have and what's on our books. As far as the buildings, where it's supposed to be, I don't know.
You don't know? So Klaus Anderson says the numbers are coming where we should be at this point?
We've, we're at 23.5 million to date. So, yeah, everything is, you know, we're still working out there, but they hold back part of some contracts until everything checks out. So, but right now, everything's in order.
Okay. That's a non-action, 7.1.1, review of new elementary building bills.
This month's was total was 637,000 approximately. So we're not spending a million dollars a month, I guess, anymore.
Not yet.
Not yet.
Any questions on the elementary building bills? Any questions? Hearing none, we'll move on to 7.1.2, approved treasures report for elementary building bond. Anything there Jackie?
No. Cash balance of 5.7 million. These are just all documents that are all tied up, so everything's in the right place.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the treasures report for the elementary building bond?
So moved.
Randy, do I have a second?
Second.
Chrissy, is there any further discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the treasures report for your elementary building bond signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. 7.2, review of budget year-to-date.
Budget year-to-date, it looks like we're on target. It's not really comparable to last year's. Last year's, we didn't have the payroll in, but when I looked at the year prior to that, we were at 84% at that time also.
Okay. Are there any questions for Jackie on the budget year-to-date? Any questions? It's a non-action item. We'll move on to 7.3, approved treasures report for May of 2021. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Amy, do I have a second? Randy, any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor to approve the treasures report for May 2021 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. 7.4, approve regular bills for June 2021. Are there any questions on the bills? Any questions on the bills? I have a motion to approve the regular bills for June 2021.
So moved.
Katie, can I have a second?
Second.
Brad. All those in favor of approving regular bills for June of 2021 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Move on to number eight, board forum and information, 8.1, board reports and updates. Does anybody from the board have anything they wish to present?
Steering committee met, talked about Hillenbrow and making sure that we're following the right path, I guess, in order to get those RFPs or the quotes done toward the building. Everything's coming along there on the finishing stages of it. Looks really nice.
We did talk about the contents at Hillenbrow and with the demo companies. They, the way it sounds, they will likely take the contents. And if anybody is interested in any, I mean, we'll have inventories, but people will probably have to deal with them. So we're not sitting and trying to sell a desk or a table. They can simply deal with the demo company and kind of take it out of our hands, so.
I've had a couple people from the community asking about the play equipment and what our plan is regarding that. Does that go with it or what?
Yeah.
Okay.
I've had some inquiry too, and I have actually went over and looked at it because I was thinking maybe we could, but it's old, it's junk. You, they're cemented in the ground. You're going to need, you're going to tear it apart. So I don't know how you would, like I said, I had somebody from the community and I said, go take a look at it and see if you can get it out of there without wrecking it. I haven't heard back, so.
The playground equipment you're talking about?
It looks good, but when you get up and really start looking at it, it's old. It's over 30 years old, so.
Yeah.
So we're, so we're saying that they, even if someone's interested, we're telling, saying no?
They'll have to deal with the demo company.
That goes to, so it doesn't go with, it goes with the building?
Yeah, the demo company is the one where kind of, they would be...
Because when they submit their bid, it includes what they're willing to pay us for the contents.
Plus what's on the yard?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I'm questioning.
Yeah, the whole thing.
Yes, that's, okay.
Okay. Anybody else have board reports?
Budget finance met. Reviewed the upcoming budget proposal for '21. And it also went over the ESER kind of preliminary budgets we've been putting together. You hear things about social worker and some teaching positions. Some of them are through the ESER and they're qualified expenses through that, so. But we're still working on, there's a lot of stuff going on with that. So it's, and I think I've told everybody, it's, it's a lot of money. I mean, it's, ESER II is 870,000 and ESER III is almost $2 million, so. And our budget shortfalls and where things are at, we're looking at trying to work that to get us through this, this time, so. Budget committee, I don't know if you, you heard my explanation and Jackie, so you kind of know what we're trying to deal with, so. When time comes for that, we'll get that to the whole board.
Well, one thing with, with those, they're a one-time...
Right.
...disbursement. So we don't want to, I don't think we want to look at adding staff. That's a long-time expense, you know, unless we can justify it with an offsetting somewhere else. I think as, from, from my standpoint, that wouldn't be good fiscal management.
And it's, it's about what the uses of the, of those monies are. And when you talk about, you know, what we've dealt with, with students being at home and some homeschooling and trying to reach out and make connections. I mean, these are positions that we're looking at trying to maybe use for, for a year or two in some cases. Some of them are, they're already, we're just filling our budget hole.
Yep. But I mean, it's not something we want to get, I mean, if we have the understanding... But I mean, it's not something we wanna get, I mean, if we have the understanding, we need this for a year or two, that's one thing, but then it ends up forever and.
You're right. I understand what you're saying.
You know, so I, I think that's just something we need to watch, but.
Yeah.
Anything else? Okay, that's a non-action item, then we'll move on to number nine, nine point one, superintendent's board report.
Um, I've just got a, the legislature is looking like they're kinda come to an agreement with two point four five on the formula and two, which is, never heard of more than two on the formula, so that's, but we've got, they haven't made their final determination, but it sounds like they've come to agreement on that, so. When that comes in, of course, tonight you're hearing a budget that was based on information we didn't have, so, but we'll make those adjustments at some point and we'll see where, where the runs are, but they look pretty positive for us and then, that's about all I got for it. There isn't any major policy changes that I've seen in the legislature that are concerning, so I think we're okay.
I think there's one time ten million dollar cross subsidy money too, right, for a special end?
Yes, only, only in two thousand twenty-two, not in two thousand twenty-three.
Okay.
Okay. Then we'll move on to nine point two, principals' board report. Cory.
The main thing going on at the high school right now is our summer school program. We have forty-five students enrolled in high school credit recovery. We don't have, they're not all there at the time, we have some doing second session in July and we've had several complete courses already, so honestly, it's going really well. Kids are showing up, which wasn't always the case during the school year, so pretty excited for that. Gone through our student handbooks and I know you'll get a chance to see those at the next meeting, I just wanna let you know that I've met with some students and staff member to go through, especially that high school, because of some of the changes that we're looking at, so. I went through that, I mentioned earlier, I did the social, social worker interviews and last thing I wanted to mention, I've been part of the, of our state association, Minnesota Association of Secondary School Principals, part of the executive committee now, so there'll be a few days that, out of the year that I'll be working with them and that kinda thing, but it's kind of a fun, fun deal, so, that's all I have.
Okay. Anybody have questions for Cory? Anybody have questions? The, the kids doing credit recovery, are you seeing a, a very good improvement or is it not what you expected?
Yeah, they're, they're actually completing things and attendance-wise, I'm pretty impressed. I mean, they're, they're showing up and I'll go walk around, check with Mr. Doolis, Ms. LaRocque and like, they're focused, they're doing their stuff. They take about a ten-minute break halfway through and, yeah, it's, I think it's going really well.
Good.
We've got about five kids that are not from our district, so our, our summer program has run through an alternative learning center, so it's open to anybody and, yeah, just really pleased. I think the most we've, we've been in the thirties before with kids enrolling, never to the hit forties, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good. So then we'll move on to nine point three, director of curriculum, teaching and learning, your board report. Melanie.
I will report on our elementary summer school. We just finished our first session in June, we had it for eight days in June and we had sixty-six students who attended. The highlight has been on Thursdays, they've been having field trips. The third through fifth grade stayed in town the first Thursday, they got to go to the law enforcement center and the whole, all the secret places in the courthouse, so they had a lot of fun and our little ones have been doing some very nice hands-on activities for them through their field trip experiences, so places I'd never heard of like the Sandlot. Google that, see what you get, it's the movie, but no, that's not where they went. But very fun, hands-on, stationed work, the kids are just so excited to be here. July, we're slated to have seventy-seven students attend, a huge chunk of fourth graders, which is really fun. It's math-based in July and Mrs. Fennickel and Mr. Wielenberg will be helping the teachers plan and execute math fun and math learning for our students, so I'm very excited for July to come. We also have twelve students through our achievement and integration coming from Edriton to join us, so we're able to make that happen as well. As far as curriculum and, and teaching and learning, we're working on getting everything ready for the school year for staff development and early out days and parent communication and just making sure we have all our plans submitted, so.
Good.
Questions?
I'd just like to add, we've been given special funding, this is the year funding, governors and again, the requirements of field trips and those type of activities are, are a part of that, so, but.
Okay. Anybody else, anybody else have anything? Anybody else? Well, I know I've talked to a couple different fourth graders that are gonna go in July and they are excited about the math portion and their thing was is maybe they will do better this fall. They were, they were excited.
Yeah. We, we have a classroom that is pretty much filled with hands-on learning, games, activities, fun for them that the teachers are, will be using throughout the, the eight days, so we're pretty pumped.
Yep. Anything else? Okay, then we'll move on to number ten, discussion, safe, ten point one, safe return to school plan.
I added this in, talking about ESER and all those, they have requirements and are safe to re, return to school plan for next year and it's like, we don't even have guidelines. So I basically modified what we had to a much shorter version of what is currently in place. This is gonna change when we do get guidelines for when we return in the fall, so I just wanted to let everybody know, we've got something out there. Part of it is for these grants and different types of things that we have to have and I don't want anybody to think this is set in stone, but if there is any feedback on what you think for next fall, that'd be great. My guess is, is that we're probably gonna have to watch the sicknesses and if there's, we're gonna have to watch to make sure that we don't get, if kids are sick and, you know, what'll all happen with all of that, but I think a lot of the other restrictions will probably be backed off on a little bit, so, but just so everybody knows, this is, this is a tentative plan as of right now, but we will be having further discussions before school starts where that'll all go, so.
I think one thing that I, that is a concern of mine going forward with the school year next year, if we're gonna be doing a hybrid model or, or allowing students to go back and forth, I think we should make them commit to at least a semester or something like that, because I feel like it's hard for staff, staff are back and forth on these kids and I feel like parents are manipulating the system to further social interactions and I, I don't think that's acceptable for our staff.
Well, we were required to offer distance learning. I don't, that is not going to, we are not going to have to offer that. I believe they are going to take that away and, so we'll see what that means, but that doesn't mean people can't then homeschool their child and, and we can have some stipulations for that though.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. Anything else? Anything else? Hearing none, we'll move on to eleven, board action of eleven point one, approve Mulebrook, Talbert and Company, PLC to provide auditing services to independent school district twenty-six eighty-nine for year ended June thirty, twenty twenty-one. Is there any discussion?
Just, it's an annual report, we have to have our books audited, so your book Talbert does a good job.
Any discussion? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve Mulebrook, Talbert and Company?
So moved.
Second.
Brad and Randy, all those in favor of approving Mulebrook, Talbert and Company to do the audit, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Eleven point two, approve garbage and recycling proposal for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
I'll move to approve the garbage and recycling proposal for twenty-one, twenty-two and go with the city of Pipestone in the amount of seven hundred and fifty dollars a month.
Second.
Okay. Did you get them Deb?
Yep.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor to approve the garbage and recycling proposal for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Eleven point three, approve twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two resolution for membership in the Minnesota State High School League. Do I address that?
Uh, each year we resolve to be a part of the Minnesota State High School League and that governs all of our activities. If you recall from last January, we got a new bill that kinda came out of thin air that we were all a little confused about and the board sent a letter to the Minnesota State High School League. If you recall, they did respond and they actually did put together a financial task force and they have put together a, a different method by which they assess their fees, so what we saw last year, our fees are a little bit higher, but they've changed it by the activities and also by the number of pupils that are enrolled. This will be, I think, gradually shifting a little bit towards the, the number of students enrolled, but this was a, an agreement that I've heard from the superintendents who were a part of that committee that worked with it, but I just wanted you to know that the letter we wrote and kinda the position we took is pretty much in line with what they've, they've come up with, so I recommend we move forward with the league and pay the fees as they're assessing them.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? And I have a motion to approve the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two resolution for membership, membership in the high school, Minnesota State High School League.
So moved.
Katie and Randy. All those in favor to approve the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two resolution for membership in the Minnesota State High School League, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Eleven point four, approve membership to MSBA for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
Minnesota School Board Association provides us a lot of services and support if needed. They lobby on behalf of school districts and they've been a very good resource for us and so definitely believe you should be a part of MSBA.
Yep. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? Can I have a motion to approve the membership to MSBA for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two?
So moved.
Second.
Brad and then Amy. All those in favor to approve the membership to MSBA for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Eleven point five, approve twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two literacy plan.
Miss Welmets.
Okay.
I will make this short and sweet. Our data this year is obviously skewed because of our situation with a worldwide pandemic, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time on our data. It is there for you to review to see what it looked like in comparison from the previous years to this year. Some gains were made, some peoples held steady and some people didn't gain as much as they could have. Did they lose? Not necessarily, they just didn't gain as much as they could have. With that said, this plan will be submitted and throughout this school year, it will be reworked to align with our school-wide Title One plan, because right now it kinda stands side by side, not exactly. So our lit, elementary literacy team will be working throughout this school year to align this literacy plan with that school-wide model, so it's not that we're not going to be doing the literacy plan, it's just going to be reviewed throughout this school year. So there aren't any changes from last year until we make the changes as the school year goes. So when we present our literacy plan next year at this time, there will be changes that will be great in comparison to this year.
Okay. Are there any questions for Melanie? Any questions for Melanie? Hearing none, can I have a motion to approve the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two literacy plan?
So moved.
Amy, do I have a second?
Second.
Katie. All those in favor to approve the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two literacy plan, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Eleven point six, approval of fiscal year twenty-two budget.
We've got several funds, as you recall, you've got your general fund, we've got our food service fund, we've got our community education fund, we've got our bond debt fund and our construction are the five funds. The biggest one is our, of course, our general fund. As you can see, we are projecting a one point one million dollar deficit for next year. Revenues are fourteen million and expenditures are at the fifteen million. As you all know, this is not an unusual number, we've seen these type of numbers before historically. Couple of ask, couple of things, I think we, we didn't know what we were getting from the states, we budgeted for a one percent increase in revenues. Our enrollment is down, so we do see approximately about four hundred thousand dollars less because of declining enrollments and we did budget there a little bit. We also had a significant drop in special education funding of about a half a million dollars, which again, if you recall budgets year to year, some years we get seven hundred and fifty thousand more, some years we drop. I saw the run today for twenty-three, they've got us at one point two million in special ed funding, almost triple what they've got for this, so again, it's a little bit of a turkey shoot in special ed and, and those are projections, so you just, you really never know with all those things, so. That coupled with the expenditures, like I said, we, we have figured in increases for employees and, and those things, so we end up with, with that. The budget committee, we went through it, you know, they, they understood. I don't know if Jackie wants to add anything or if anybody has any questions. The general fund is our biggest portion of our budget. I don't know if you want me to go through all of them or do you want, I mean, the general fund's the, the big one, so that's where that's at.
Do we know how much the one point four five percent of generating additional revenue? What's we get that?
We do, back in the binder in my office.
Any like guess?
What, what do we?
I'd say around three hundred thousand.
Yep. There's a full two point four five percent, of course, that included the special ed cross subsidy, so overall, including the special ed, without them all.
Jackie and I talked, I would say comfortably, we're probably looking at about a half million dollar deficit for next year. That would be our probably most reasonable guess.
If that, if that bigger number passes.
Where that's at and, and expend, I mean, again, you know, we were conservative with the gen, with the revenue estimates and we're pretty liberal with the expense estimates, so typically, but I would say realistically, we're probably looking in the half million dollar range. Now, we do have ESER dollars and we have things to soften through that, so this is why we didn't make any cuts. We'll watch it very closely, but we do have some of those dollars to get us through the next couple of years. I would hope, you know, we could've panicked and cut this spring and then, you know, here we would be sitting trying to hire people back. I think the approach we've taken with just kinda watching how this thing all plays out and where things are at, plus we, we may get more students back and that could make big changes with all of this too, so you gotta remember, we, we lost about fifty students, so that's, that gets to be quite a chunk of change, that's four hundred thousand dollars right there, so you get twenty back or thirty back, you know, those are the things that make a big difference, so.
And our compensatory revenue, those top two lines, that's down, is that based on your free reduced applications, so people aren't filling out anymore?
We took a hit there, yeah.
And then next month, just the, the basic skills extended time in twenty-one, if you look at this, it's the second line on the revenue, there are twenty-one thousand five hundred fifty-four dollars, they made us reserve a percentage of our basic skills, we don't have to do that anymore and we have some money left in our fund balance from last year, so I'm gonna bring a budget transfer to the board next month. So I asked, I went to you for your end training assets, so why did we ever have to do it in the first place? I don't know, somebody just thought it was a good idea for a couple of years. That's, that's the reasoning I got.
Okay.
But you can do a budget transfer and, and get what you have in there and put it to the unassigned general fund balance, so it's no longer restricted to spend in that area, so.
Okay.
So that's the general fund. The food service budget looks good. You will see, you know, we're, we're deficit spending in, in food service, but that's because we're spending money from our fund balance in food service on equipment in the new kitchen, so we have to realize that we're spending that money, so it looks like we're, we're over, you know, we're, we're spending more than we're taking in, but part of it is, is we're spending down reserves, which is what we actually needed to do because they were, we had to actually write a letter saying that's why our fund balance is where it's at, otherwise they don't let you carry fund balances at large. So food service is looking good. The community education fund is, is balanced and, and looks to be in order there. That also includes learning readiness and preschool. And then of course, your debt service is our bond on our new building and it's our second of 20 payments.
Perfect.
So we got that going. Eighteen more to go.
Eighteen to go.
And then there is also the construction fund, which is, we have to have that while we're building, so I would anticipate next year, that should be closed out.
I hope so.
Jackie hopes so too. So for our, and we're required to submit a budget to the state, it is an estimate of what we're looking at and Jackie works hard to get this, you know, reasonable and, but I think we're, we're in good shape there, so.
Okay.
And if anyone ever has any questions, I've got the support for all these numbers.
Okay. So Deb, when we make the motion, do we need it with the dollar amount or can we do it as budget presented?
Yes.
Okay.
As presented.
Can I have a motion to approve the fiscal year 22 budget?
So moved.
Randy? Can I have a second?
Second.
Brad? All those in favor of approval of the 22 budget, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. 11.7, Resolution Approving Superintendent Kevin Enerston as the Identified Official with Authority to Authorize User Access to MDE Secure Websites for Pipestone Area Schools. Is there any questions? Any questions? Hearing none, can I have a motion to approve that more, that resolution? Katie? Do I have a second?
Second.
Randy? All those in favor of approval of the Resolution Approving Kevin Enerston as the Identified Official with Authority to Authorize User Access to MDA, MDE Secure Websites for Pipestone Area Schools, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Move on to 11.8, Wind Turbine Discussion.
In April, the board asked for quotes on removal of the turbine. We have two quotes from Hurling Construction for 50,000 and Renew Energy for 85,000. Timelines, the Hurling Construction could be here last week of July, first week of August sometime, so that's kind of their timeline. The other, Renew, has not given us a definitive timeline. There was one other company that has expressed interest, but they have not met two deadlines to get a proposal in. They were the one who would take it down for nothing because they want parts, because they gotta feel with those turbines, so I guess it comes down to where we're at, if there's any other discussion on the turbine.
Any further discussion?
What is the reasoning for missing the deadlines or what, or they don't respond or? I don't know, just asking, because it's a $50,000 difference, so that's what I'm asking.
I know.
Right.
And that, we can hold on and wait to see.
Well, I just didn't know if they expressed why they're meeting the, you know, I, there are no reason. Okay?
I don't know if it's, well, they're waiting for when they need it and, you know, I mean, we don't, we don't want it to sit here for
Well, no.
You know.
No, but I also don't want a month later, someone to say they'll take it down for free.
I know.
[laughing].
Yeah.
Could come in tomorrow. I, I mean, that's where these, a lot of these, I mean, all the things that, you know, you guys authorized to tear it down and then someone comes with some
Yeah.
proposal to save it.
Right.
It's, we're gonna sit here and whoa, whoa, chase our tail on this thing and, you know, whatever we want to do, so.
And having gotten the information on last month's proposal about the insurance problems, it still ends up where the district ends up short to cover even our cost of insurance for the, for the wind tower. So my recommendation to Kevin at that time, him and I discussed it, was send him a letter, we weren't interested, and we did do that. So going forward, I guess, if there's gonna be no further discussion, we did make the motion to dismantle it, have it removed. We would need a motion as to who we wish to have dismantle it with the two proposals here, if we wish to accept one of these proposals.
Make a motion to approve Hurling Construction to dismantle the tower.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Brad? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the proposal from Hurling Construction for the decommissioning of the wind tower, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign.
Aye.
Oh, Katie disapproved. Okay, motion passes. Five, one. Sorry about that, Katie. Move on to 11.9, Superintendent Evaluation. Can I have a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Randy, do I have a second?
Second.
Amy? We're gonna go into closed session at 8:37. We'll go next door quick and then we'll be back.
Oh, I don't
Okay, do I have a motion to come back out of closed session?
So moved.
8:54 is what my computer says, Deb.
Okay.
Randy, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll present the findings then from our evaluation and we came to a mutual agreement of a favorable evaluation of Superintendent Enerston and we'll move on from there.
Okay.
Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Katie and Randy? All those in favor of adjournment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, meeting adjourned.